Order with a quorum of three. And for Catherine T.
So Jim, do you have everyone, oops, can people hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Do you have everyone, Jim, there that you expect to have from the FinCom?
Uh, Scott's gonna join us.
Uh, I can't hear Jim.
I'm not muted.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
Okay, it's gonna be that kind of a night.
Can you hear me, Catherine?
Can, Tom, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, Catherine, can you hear us?
Yes.
Uh-oh. Everybody can hear Jim but me. Well, I'm not muted.
You are muted now.
Yeah.
I cannot hear anybody.
Can you hear me?
Okay. I'm having a deja vu from like an hour ago. I'm going to sign off and I will sign back on.
Oh, okay, we'll wait. Um, I have a few more people hopefully will be in attendance with Scott and uh, and David Molentano.
Okay, is that better?
I can hear you fine, can you hear us?
Uh, we can, phew.
Yes.
Oh, good.
Sorry about that. So, we have everyone here that we expect to have, I think I asked that question but I couldn't hear the answer.
Uh, Scott Schonberger will be joining us. And David Molentano emailed me early in the day and said that he was feeling lousy.
Uh-oh.
But then he emailed me about a half an hour or so ago and said he's gonna try to make it. So I would suggest we move forward, we have a quorum of three. And I will call the Finance Committee to order and a roll call of Jim Purdy.
Dave Reed.
Susan Mailen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and I'll call the Select Board to order at 6:03 and we'll have a roll call attendance, we can start with Gary.
Gary Cheeseman. You're muted there.
I am, I couldn't find the button.
It's one of those days, it really is, it's a full moon or something. Catherine Harrison also here. So I, I think we're the first part of it and I see that we have Jim Powers here, so um, I think Jim, the first part of this meeting, if I'm correct, is to get an audit report um, from, from Mr. Powers, is that?
I have public, I have public input, input on my agenda, I don't know.
Okay. Okay.
So you can skip and go to me, I don't care, whatever you want.
That's our standard agenda.
Okay.
And you can do this from a Finance Committee point or from everyone's point of view, we can just take a minute, why don't we? We're all here.
Yep.
Uh, we'll take just uh, we'll usually just take a few minutes if anyone has a question or a comment on something that's not on the agenda, um, they put their name in the chat. And if we see anyone who has a question or a comment, um, well, please help us identify you and we'll we will take public comment or input at this time. I do not see anyone in the chat, does anyone? No, okay. I guess we have no public comment at this point. So we'll proceed with Mr. Powers, if that's okay with everyone.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, Jim, for coming.
Wouldn't have missed it, thank you, Catherine. Well, this meeting this year is going to be a little bit different than last year, if kind of everybody remembers, it was sort of a hectic year, a lot of turnover from that point in time to now. So, what was, what was done last year obviously caused a lot of problems, um, both internally, even for the audit, getting things closed down. Finally accomplished that at that point in time and then some changes obviously in the offices were made. You know, the, we have a management letter that really has one point on it, um, from last year, carried over and basically not, I see Jamie is, is sitting there, so um, and so, uh, are you really, from where you are and what I see, couldn't have made a better hire from the standpoint of um, getting things resolved? One of Jamie's best qualities is, especially since she's going through this, kind of the first time in her career as she goes through, uh, she has an incredible work ethic. And, and she has pride in performance and that, that goes a long way, I'll hire people like that every day of the week. But one of the most important attributes with, with Jamie is that when she's stuck on something she hasn't been done before, she's not afraid to call me, okay? And say, Jim, what do I do here? I haven't done this before. Make sure that you're doing it right, how do we reconcile? She worked a lot with also Katie from my office on that. And with that being said, I'm very comfortable that at the end of this year, even though it took a while to get everything done, uh, you're in pretty good shape, especially going into fiscal year 22 and into 23. She's working really well with the Department of Revenue and Beth Mosley, who's the coordinator in there. And Beth had some great things to say about Jamie the other day herself as I was talking. And so keeping that good relationship up with the Department of Revenue and I think that open and honest communication with them and everything else is, I don't mean to embarrass you, Jamie, I can see you kinda, um, but what I'm telling you is the truth now. Uh, with that being said, she still has a lot to learn from the standpoint of closing everything down, everything's kind of falling on top of her. And, and a lot of it is just keeping up with the day to day and then doing all the closing, making sure everything is reconciled. Uh, we had to go through some additional things at, to close the year, uh, work together with her to get it to that point. And here's where we are today, so from uh, last year's management letter point, which was a material weaknesses internal controls, um, that has been eliminated, uh, from an audit standpoint. Doesn't mean it's perfect, doesn't mean that, um, everything happens, but the main thing that happens in government the most important, important control is to reconcile your cash and investments every month. Put policies and procedures in place that documents how that is going to occur. And then reconcile the treasury collectors' records with the accountant's records to make sure that the accounting ledges properly reflect what actually happened in cash. And that's occurring every month and the objective that Jamie has put in place is try to get that done uh, by the fifteenth of the month following the month end. Which sometimes is aggressive, things that's happened that helps her do that is now she's getting pretty much all her bank statements electronically, so she can see what happens all the time, she's reconciled things and she doesn't let things if there's a variance, and there are going to be variances, people make mistakes, it just happens, okay? But it's a system that will detect and correct that error on a timely basis, gives you a sound internal control procedure over that. And she really understands the importance of that, that was kind of what broke down last year. And that was a pandemic, partial pandemic issue. Who's responsible for what, who needs to do what, and she understands that. But right now, the, the buck stops with her. And she's, she's willing to do anything that she can in order to make sure that's accomplished every month on a timely basis. We audited the year, we had to help her with some corrections at the end of the year. Uh, Jamie and I talked about some budget issues that need to be reflected on some unusual transaction. Especially with the long-term debt and the bands that are, it's an unusual transaction, how you budget for that. And, and we went over all of those things and she knows how to handle that now. That was one of the issues that we had and she had with the Department of Revenue, just on reporting for all of their reports. And when she finally got that done, uh, a little while ago, I, I think you had the free cash like completed and approved in less than a day, am I right with that, Jamie? Okay. And so what our objective is, is more important is what's going to happen at the end of this year now that she's got a year on her belt as we go through and can, and continue, I think everybody is supporting her as she goes through this and understand this is the second time she's really going through a lot of these things. But to try to reconcile cash and get the ledges done and the financial statements done on a quicker basis and get the free cash done so you can make decisions on a, on a more timely basis yourself, help manage the town. I think that is possible. And coming into fiscal year 22, she's got everything done pretty well in 21. So we'll be talking to her as we close, as you close down the year to make sure everything's reconciled and if there's any issues that we get them resolved and maybe get Katie out there from my office to help out if you need a little bit of a hand. Uh, because of just the fact that she still is, um, doing a lot herself, uh, over and above what is expected of, at least when I look at it. And, and close down and get comfortable with that, get your free cash certified. And then when you're coming into the fall, you know where you're going to be. We'll review the recap with her early to make sure everything is done, okay? And then Jamie and I have been talking about this all along. And so this isn't news to her or me as we go through, but I thought it was worthwhile to share that with the Select Board and the Finance Committee that um, it's, you shouldn't have the issues you had in the past from the standpoint of treasury and accounting and making sure things reconcile. Her job and those jobs, she's not a policymaker, she's not making a decision. Her job is to give you accurate representation of where you are at the end of the year, but also give you interim reports that are accurate. Budget to actual reports to see whether or not you have to make any adjustments before the year end. And also begin to warn you if all of a sudden, uh, you know, one of the appropriation looks like it's going to be overspent, it's easier to deal with if you're in April as opposed to finding out on June 28th or July 20th. Uh, so those are some of the objectives that uh, are there as, as uh, we move forward into this year. That's kind of an overview of the internal controls and how we made out and Catherine, I don't know how you want me to, uh, I can take questions on the controls before going into the financial statements at this point in time, or we can do it at the end, however you'd like to proceed. You're muted, Catherine.
Since we have a fairly limited amount of time and I think this, um, the issues that are now resolved and I'll add my thanks to Jamie for all the work that she's done. But I think maybe it would make sense, if that's okay with you, Jim, too, to take questions on what you've said so far, so that we can, you know, the numbers are the numbers, but this has been an important year.
Yeah, you, you got your free cash certified, so you know where the numbers ended up, that all reconciles to the financial statements. The entity-wide statements are not that important and as we have in the past, we've discussed the OPEB liabilities and the uh, pension liabilities, the long-term things, but other than that, you're in pretty good shape from a fund balance standpoint in the general fund, the water fund and capital projects, uh, community preservation and uh, and your debt's in pretty good shape. So I think you're, you're pretty much under control, but I'll get into that. So if anybody has any questions, it certainly can address those.
It's, it's not as much a question, uh, Jim, but I'm sure Jamie's told you we have in the FY23 budget a halftime assistant town accountant. And I would anticipate that some of the recommendations are, and what that position would certainly facilitate both training reconciliation and making sure we're on track going into the, into the next year.
Yeah. Jim, the hard part about that, I'm, I'm glad to hear that you've put that in place, is finding people. It's just not the easiest thing in the world to do at this time, so you may try hard to find them and I'm just warning you that the budget's there. But whether or not you can find a qualified candidate that understands, you, you just probably need a good accountant. Doesn't necessarily have to be a municipal accountant because if Jamie assigns that person, like you said, Jim, the reconciliations, good accountants should be able to reconcile cash, show them a process, tie that back into the ledger. And without having municipal experience, because you really only look at the cash and investment accounts, et cetera. Um, and I, hopefully that will come to fruition and you'll be able to find someone to assist. But I wholeheartedly support what the Select Board and the Finance Committee did on, on that, on that side.
Good, thank you. Thanks for the warning, by the way.
They were gonna have a hard time. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, other questions for Jim on just general, um, on the management letter from, from, for this year, but which seems to me that most everything that was identified has been corrected or a process has been devised to correct it, if not, is that a true statement?
That's a true statement, like I said earlier, it's not perfect. I don't put in minor things because sometimes they get overblown when they don't need to be overblown. What I'll do with some minor things is Jamie and I will talk and say, I, you need to change this type of thing. It's not seriously affecting your books, or ledges, et cetera. And if she doesn't implement it in that next year, I'll then bring that up to the next level, that the Select Board and Finance Committee need to see that as part of my presentation. Uh, and again, nothing material, no significant deficiencies, um, incredible change from one year to the next. Uh, and so that's kind of the way I approach the management letter. Sometimes I could put something in that's minor and somebody gets a hold of it and blows it way out of proportion and it, it doesn't make sense, I use my professional judgment in determining what I believe are the risk elements as part of making sure that your books are accurately represented and presented on a timely basis. And um, you have to trust my judgment on some of those.
Right. Is, is there anything um, in the financial statement in general or in specific, specifically that you'd like to point out to us in the, in the actual numbers that might be unusual or different or um, we should be aware of?
No, I mean, there's nothing unusual or different, um, even through the pandemic, you ended up because of the way you budget and a few other things. You ended up with a surplus, uh, in calendar fiscal year 2021, you increased your general fund uh, fund balance, uh, by a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And that's even with using $765,000 worth of free cash to balance your budget. Um, you offset that, we had talked about, obviously, the revenue projections as you go through in the prior years, we don't need to rehash that, it's a policy you've had, but your budget low on the estimated revenues to help with that uh, free cash used and it nets to, and so you have your budget and conservatively, you still have uh, $560,000 in your stabilization fund. And that's great, you've been increasing your OPEB, um, contribution every year, last year it was 60,000 and you've been doing in addition 10,000 every year, I haven't looked at the fiscal 22 budget yet, but I imagine that was 70,000 and it might be 80.
It's 80,000. And 80,000 for 23.
Yeah.
Oh, really, 80,000?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And so, um, and so you still have a good liability, but um, it's, you know, you're about you know, 6%, 6.5% funded. Out of the 5 million, you know, of the total liability. It's on average what most people are doing, there's, you're probably at the 50% range for most of the communities. You know, this is a long-term liability and the town should, you know, it has, it has a plan in place and um, you are contributing, so uh, and, and it's just whether or not you want to start contributing a little bit more. But again, you don't have to, you're paying all the bills, you will always pay the bills, whatever pay-as-you-go is, but um, and, and the only other piece is the Essex Regional Retirement System. There, you know, you still have a, an $8.5 million liability and uh, they're almost 60% funded, which is better than a lot of the other counties as you went through and they're using a kind of a lower discount rate at 7.3%. Um, so that's, looks good from that standpoint and, you know, you're on track hopefully to get that funded over time. Those are the two big things, everything else was, uh, you know, on track and I didn't see any significant issues in the financial statements that would concern me.
Finance Committee, anything?
Finance, I do have a question, Jim.
Yeah.
So this is kind of a, I, I guess a theoretical question. Uh, and I'll just use as an example, the school department this year in their excess and deficiency account came up with 3.1 million, of which they threw 2 million towards their, through. They funded 2 million to bring down their OPEB liability.
Okay.
So, so the question that I have, uh, smaller numbers, for example, this year with our free cash, we didn't use any free cash to fund operations, which is a good thing. We funded about five and a quarter, 525,000 in capital. And our, and our balance in that account is about 380,000, so this is my question.
Okay.
Is, does it make, does it make any good financial planning sense? If the town if the town goes forward with I won't call them excess funds, I'll call them rainy day funds, because we're holding that 380 towards 24 unanticipated, you know, increased cost. But I think you know where I'm going with this, would it make any sense to take a chunk of money if we had it? And put it against the unfunded liability of OPEB? And if we could do that year to year, just by chance, if we had a, a bulk of money to do that with, does that make any long-term sense?
In long-term sense, it, it, it makes sense, I mean, that's a liability, it's not going to go away. You know, the school had an extra $2 million to put aside for that and it, it made sense for them because there's a combination of the more that you put into that fund, the lower the, uh, the higher the discount rate you can use, which will lower your liability, which will then lower your contribution required in order to fully fund that. But one of the things when we like, look at the town as, as you go through that, this is a paper liability, uh, meaning that uh, you, you're fully funded from the standpoint as pay-as-you-go. Bill comes in, you pay retirees, you budget that every year. I don't think you have, I'd like to see you have more, more reserves in their highest stabilization fund. And, and realistically, dealing with Essex Retirement System, that's a legal liability you have to contribute to and you have to fund that no later than 2040. And realistically, it's the, the same liability, you're paying your retirees two different benefits, one's obviously a retirement allowance and the second is paying for your share of the healthcare. And what I think I said a little bit earlier, say if you came up with another million and a half dollars, what I'd rather see you do is incrementally, and again, this is, I can't tell you what to do because I'm the independent auditor. This is your policy. But increasing, instead of increasing it by $10,000 every year, I would think you'd want to maybe say, you know what, why don't we increase it by 25,000 or $50,000 every year? Um, and, and, and work on it that way, because other things come up all the time, um, that you may need the money for, and one of the things that's I can, I can tell you a way to get it out legally, but once you put the money in to the OPEB trust fund, you can't say, oh, we're short on money this year, we're gonna draw it out, okay? You'd have, I could tell you legally, and I've been through this with the state and everybody else, you can do it in three steps. Okay, each one of them legal. And you, in effect, instead of withdrawing the money from, um, the trust fund, what you would do is vote to pay for a certain portion of the retirees' actual expenses this year from the OPEB trust fund. The OPEB trust fund is set up, in effect, to pay for the retiree obligation. And so it's legal to pay bills out of that. What you can't do is just say, I'm taking $300,000 back out to balance my budget. But if you had $300,000 worth of retiree, uh, your share of health insurance expense in say 2023, you could vote to use those particular funds to pay for it, and that's the legal part of it. But once you do that, what happens is, I would be, and so would the actuary be looking at it, at that and saying, you know what, you're not following what you had planned to do. And part of your discount rate that you use is based on how you fund and consistently fund the OPEB trust fund. So if you stop doing that or take money out, I would say from an auditor's standpoint, you cannot use a discount rate as high as you're doing, you're gonna have to go back down to a lower blended rate or a risk-free rate and that will drive your your actual liability a lot higher from an accounting standpoint. So I, I don't know if that helps, Jim, as, as you, as you're taking a look at it, but that's kind of my advice and, and realistically, you can, you can actually send money over to the Essex Retirement System as an additional contribution and they have the ability to account for that now and keep that money segregated just for you and it's not allocated to everybody else. And that's a legal liability that you have to fund. So, you know, I'd, I'd rather fund the legal liability that you have to fund as opposed to a discretionary one. But I think what you started years ago and getting it up to $80,000, I'd, I'd look at maybe taking a look at increasing that amount as you move forward.
Okay, thank you. Tom, you got your hand up.
Yep, thank you, Jim. Um, I'm not your auditor, but I can advise you on this. I just, is that historically, oh, thank you, Michelle, historically, my team has set up the OPEB trust fund and been regularly paying into it on an annual basis.
Yeah.
That's where it's important, if you're doing that, is on an annual basis, not basically one year and not another, you know, back and forth. Because the bonding agencies like to see this, as Jim was saying, with having a good stabilization fund and a healthy, um, other reserves. But if you're putting money into OPEB fund, it should be on a regular basis and not just one year and not the next year. Because that's what they look for and as Jim's saying, if you can increase it slightly over a regular basis, that's a benefit also as the bonding agency, uh, look at you.
Yeah, and there are other things you can look at as you go through, Tom and Jim, is you have a long-term note that gets rolled over every year and you do that just for the fact that the cost of borrowing right now is so ridiculously low that your advisors say, don't go long-term and, um, even at a, I don't know, seven, eight years left on about a million six of debt. You could, if you wanted to pay down a million six of debt, if all of a sudden you did that and you'd be clear and all your future debt service payments would almost be over with, because most of your debt is coming due in 22 and 23. And um, that million six is, is hanging out there. And, and the way you're financing it now fits into your budget, but that's another place you could use it from that standpoint, so there's all kinds of arguments either way and um, and who knows what's gonna happen to interest rates in the next couple of years, I don't know what's gonna happen to it and but the feds increased their rate and who knows what's gonna happen to the municipal market, but I mean, when you can borrow for a year at, at half of 1%, um, it's not free money, but it's close to being free. I mean, inflation blows that away from the standpoint of what the dollar value is, what you're paying back with future dollars.
Anything else? I, I assume, Jim Powers, if we have questions that we think of later or as we look a little bit more at the audit report, we can either funnel our questions to Jamie probably and get back to you with any questions we think of later.
You know, part of the contract is if you need me for another Zoom, like we You know, part of the contract is if you need me for another Zoom, like we did for the Appa Money and the rest of that as we go through. It's, I only live in Beverly, too, so I can actually attend to me.
Someday, we'll be doing that.
Say that, I'll show up at your house.
Don't give Jamie your address. You know, just.
I'll be opening the pool up soon.
Definitely coming now.
We had a lot of very, very positive, I believe folks will agree, comments about the ARPA presentation that you made. You got quoted a lot in a few weeks after that. So we really, really appreciate that. It was kind of a, you know, black hole of what do we do with this? And we haven't completed our plans. The town's got a plan to make a plan. But at least we have a much better idea of what we're looking at. And and I know, Jamie, you talk, you talk all the time. But thanks again for that presentation. That was very well received by folks.
No problem. And once you get to that point, if you want me to, like I said before, pre-audit all of those things, I will do that to make sure that what you're spending the money on is allowable. But realistically, now with that ten million dollar revenue replacement change in the final rule, you'd really have to work hard to find an unallowable expense. Okay.
It's a creative group, Jim. Be careful what you say.
That's why I still want to take a look at it.
We got the message pretty clear from Jamie that she was gonna run everything by you, so that we were sound, we're sure. I think that's still everybody's idea. Okay, anything else for the audit report?
Just one quick question, Jim. Our bond rating remains unchanged.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, is what it is. You, you're still in pretty good shape. That's why we're talking about the reserves and increasing the reserves. They put more attention to that than the OPEB piece. It really doesn't matter if you're six percent funded or four percent funded or ten percent funded when you take a look at it, because the big liability is there for a long time. And so maintaining the reserves, like you said, you didn't use free cash in twenty-two, correct, to balance the budget? Twenty-three, all right, twenty-three?
Twenty-three, going forward, yeah.
Okay. And again, those reserves, they look at it as really a consistent balance, and do you have policies in place that you may want to take a look at? And say that, all right, this is the level of reserves that we want to have in here is X percent of our normal expenditures, our total revenues, and we want to have, you know, the triple A communities have fifteen, twenty percent of their recurring budget sitting in a combination of free cash and stabilization funds. And that helps with that. And realistically, Jim, as you go through that, how much are you borrowing right now? And right now, the biggest debt you have is one point six five that you get each year. And I think last year's rate was under a half of one percent. And that that goes through. So you could be triple A plus, and you're really not gonna say, you know, buy, I say, you might say five thousand dollars. And so, however, if you were, and realistically, any of the, you know, you've redone Town Hall and a lot of other things over the years. So you're not looking, I don't know if you have any huge capital expenditures coming up. And you're contributing over to the capital project, as you said, in the budget and the kind of pay as you go as opposed to debt. Where you really, your bond rating comes into play is with the regional school district, because they take a look at both Hamilton and Wyndham along with the regional school district, because realistically, your creditworthiness is really where the bond rating comes from for them, because you're funding this. They're not generating their own revenue. They're getting state aid and contributions from the two communities. So the weakest link between you and Hamilton usually drives what the rating agency is for any of the the big bonds the school may be taking out. And although we do audit that, another partner does the audit. I didn't look at their financials this year. I usually do. But someone else took the secondary look, so I'm not sure if they're looking at any big capital. But that's really where the money comes, because you're paying for whatever rate they get.
Okay. All right. Are we? We're good? Everybody good?
Good.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks so much. It's nice.
Thank you, Jim.
Take care.
And good work, Jamie.
Yes, thank you, Jamie. Really, what do you say? Thanks. So FinCom, we have, the select board has a an agenda to continue. I don't know if you have, FinCom has a further agenda. If you don't, feel free to adjourn or say.
Well, we don't have, we don't have a further agenda. This was the only agenda on the FinCom meeting, so I can't add and won't add an agenda at this point. So I can adjourn the FinCom meeting, and then people can stay. I'm not sure what your agenda is, Catherine, but people can choose to stay.
Yeah, right. Individuals can can choose to say, say, of course. But it's probably right. You need to adjourn if you're done with your business.
Oh, okay. So I hear a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting at six, six thirty-six.
I'll make the motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting at six thirty-six.
I'll second it.
Oh, there he is.
David M.
Yay.
Okay. I'm glad you're here, David. All those, all those in favor of adjournment of the finance committee meeting this evening. Hi, Jim.
Hi, David R.
Hi, David M.
Hi, Susan.
Thank you very much. The finance committee meeting is adjourned for this portion of the of the meeting.
Thank you. Nice being all together.
Thank you, Jamie, by the way, and congratulations. You've done a lot of work.
They can sleep now for like two days, then town meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay.
Okay, so relative to the select board, we have about the same participants that we had at the beginning of the FinCom. I'm just looking through to see if we need to do public input again. I don't see any new participants. So I'm gonna take a risk that someone will write to us if we didn't hear somebody's comment, but I think we've done public comment, which means that on the next item on the select board agenda, it is our announcements. And usually, we ask Tom to share announcements with us. And so, Tom, if you would do that, that would be great.
I think we lost Tom.
No, I'm still here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I had to unmute myself, Diane, sorry.
First announcement, it's coming up very quickly, is our annual warrant hearing will be on Zoom Monday, March twenty-eighth at seven o'clock. It'd be appreciated if our residents could watch that and receive all the information regarding our town meeting articles in preparation for the upcoming town meeting on that Saturday afternoon. Following our town meeting, we will have our annual town election on Thursday, April seventh, from seven AM to eight PM at Wyndham Town Hall. And we would appreciate all our enrolled voters to come and speak how they feel the town of Wyndham should be heading. So thank you very much.
Okay. I think that flows you right into a town administrator's update, Tom, so if you'd like to continue with that, that would be great.
Certainly. Thank you very much. Update on a number of items. First is, I know before I came back, the board was working on various administrative policies from the select board. I forwarded them to Town Council for their review after we had worked on them, and she has stated she'll get back to us very quickly on their review for that. So we'll have that on an upcoming agenda. Secondly, I will begin working on town meeting motions tomorrow. Found what we did previously, and I've written motions probably about a hundred times for town meetings. So I have the way that Wyndham likes them. So I'll be putting those forward and off the Town Council, hopefully by the end of day tomorrow. So we'll be having them well in advance of town meeting. Next is, since the board last week approved Town Council Regional Approval, because they're sharing council between Hamilton and us. I will be meeting on next Monday, trying to complete the Assessing Shared Services Program to bring that back to the board. So that will be meeting with Hamilton, I believe, on Monday. Also, legislators, our local legislators are being urged to increase on the House side various items in the budget, including an additional one hundred billion in the Chapter ninety bond bill, increasing our Chapter seventy minimum aid to students, and increasing our general government assistance from basically a two point seven percent increase to a seven point three percent increase. Of that, I can't judge what the minimum aid increase would be for our regional system. If the bond, if the bond bill got increased, that would be approximately, gosh, I forget, I think approximately seventy-five thousand dollars for additional road. And the general government would be about twenty thousand dollars. I'm not optimistic on that, but any budget increase would be helpful to our community. Next, I was met with the councilman agent, met with Jim Reynolds, and we are coordinating our COVID nineteen test kit program with the Board of Health, and that should be coordinated probably within the next couple of days. So we have all that information, and we should be having it out to the public in just a few days. Next, we are speaking of money. We are appreciative that we are receiving fifty thousand dollars from the legislature to develop a mental health program with our town. And Jamie, I don't think she's on with us today, but thank Jamie for getting that material to us, and we will be developing with the Health Board of Health of how to utilize the fifty thousand dollars. Right now, it would be a general program to increase services to our residents who have concerns or require information about mental health programs and such. But I'm looking forward to working with the Board of Health and our health nurses to develop that program. So thank you to the Commonwealth for fifty thousand dollars to seed the program. Next, I know we've been very interested, because the weather's been nice regarding Pleasant Pond. We will be ordering, and thank you, Michelle, you're watching, we will be ordering the stickers for that and working with our police department and Trudy, our town clerk, on the distribution of that. If the weather stays like this, I'm looking forward to the opening of the park for all residents there. And it's looking very nice lately. There. Next, just a couple of quick items that came in today. There is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars available through our insurance, MYA, to communities to plan, I think fifteen communities could be eligible, outdoor fitness areas, particularly on walking trails, where you can do things with that. We're putting programs. This is not ball fields. This is not. This is basically for areas that residents may walk on or something that's small that they can work on, fitness areas, not for organized sports. So I've sent that off to Kate and also to Sean. And I'm going to look and see if we could be eligible for that. Like I keep saying, there's money out there. You just have to ask for it.
That's great.
And I believe that's that's it at this point. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of things, really updates to the public on the chair's report. Tonight, we have concluded, just before this meeting, we concluded the interviews for our three town administrator finalists. We are very interested. They are recorded. They were broadcast live, I believe, all three of them. We are very interested in input from from the residents. Our email addresses are all on the website or our phone numbers if you prefer to call. But if there's anyone who would like to provide input, who saw a candidate or the candidates and would like to provide input, we'd be very grateful for that. We obviously are working hard to try to make the right decision there. So those interviews are complete, and we're hoping to be able to make an announcement about our choice and deliberate and make an announcement sometime next week. The other thing that we've been, I guess, I think since our last meeting, I've attended a quintuple chairs meeting with the school committee and the finance committees of Hamilton and our own. There wasn't anything too substantive. We talked a little bit about, more about logistics, you know, what's happening, who's going to what town meeting, and are there any things that we anticipate might be issues? Didn't seem like there were. But we did continue a conversation about, I think Joe from Hamilton may have started this conversation about wanting to start up, develop a group of, maybe it's the chairs group, maybe it's a slightly different group of people that had a more continuous and year-round conversation about all things Hamilton Wyndham schools, so that there would be some, not just, oh, let's talk about the school budget, but actually between the two towns and the schools, more regular conversation. Those of you who've been around for a while, I think of it as, what did we call that? Budget Process Committee many years ago. It was actually a long-range planning committee, and then a Budget Process Committee, where people from each town, and they weren't necessarily the chairs, and it included some townspeople, just some residents, that just made sure that we all had the same, not that we didn't agree, but that our our way of messaging was the same, if the message was the same. Anyway, there seems to be some interest in this. Obviously, around that table, a number of people are going to be different, will be changing people in that group. But I think I would say for the finance committee and the select board here, please listen when you get the call. I'm not sure. There was another meeting scheduled in May, which I think Vinnie Leone was going to, is going to remind people of. I assume he's going to get to our town administrator, and so you may be hearing more about some kind of a joint, general joint, ongoing, informal, no decision-making, just communication kind of group. No one could believe that we actually, years ago, at the end of the budget process, put together a newsletter that had the school budget on one, on two pages, and the town budget on one, and each town on a page. Was an interesting service. I'm not sure we could pull that off. But anyway, that's something that the the towns are talking about, so that you know what I heard. We did talk a little bit, too, and I'm hoping that everyone will have more information, but the the school district is beginning to talk a little bit about their association and acceptance by the school building authority into a feasibility stage of a building project. There's a, there will be a lot of conversation about that, and I was impressed that Eric Tracy is very interested in communicating. So you won't have to look for that information, I don't think, at least on the select board. But it's going to be very involved, as anyone who's been involved with a building a school will know. So that was the other thing. And then also, just so that folks know, we continue to plan the details and the logistics of the town meeting. We've gotten some feedback, and we understand that this is the first town meeting that we've had indoors in a while. And scientifically, you know, people should feel comfortable about that. But there are still folks that are a little bit uncomfortable, and so we're trying to address everyone's concerns relative to having specific areas where people feel most comfortable with masks, having as much mitigation. We're still waiting to hear a little bit back from the Board of Health. But as that unfolds, we'll share more information about the specifics. Our moderator has been great in helping with that. So that's all I have for tonight, I think. Gary or Diane, anything that you would like to put and add in a select board report?
Just a quick question.
Just a quick question or any update on the permitting position?
Well, good question, Tom. Permitting position.
I'm sorry, my speakers aren't working well here, I'm sorry.
The question is, do we have the permitting position advertised yet?
The position?
The permitting clerk's position.
Yeah, that's posted, yeah, we did that earlier this week.
And that closes out when?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Gary, these are not working.
I think I actually, I think they close on April 1st, that, that posting closes on April 1st. Given that, I don't know how long it would take to, I don't know anything about whether anyone's applied or how long it would take to get someone on. But I did read in the posting that it's closing on April 1st. So.
The due, I believe the due date is another 10 days.
Thank you.
I just wanted to see if we could on a future meeting, not tonight, we're running a little bit behind, but talk about our IT. If there's been any changes with the collaborative as well as moving to hybrid meetings or how we're gonna. Do that. So I think we should start trying to look into that too, please.
Anything else? If not, we'll move on to our minutes approval on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the Wyndham Select Board meeting open session minutes from March 8th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor of approving those minutes, Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So unanimous, these were, this was a tough set of minutes. So as usual, great job again, Catherine T. And thank you for that. So we have a unanimous approval. So we have a couple of items of new business, most of which I'm going to turn over to someone else. The first one is a discussion and vote for annual sponsorship of the community house. This is a familiar one, and I think, Tom, if you can share some information about that, then we'll be able to make a motion.
Sure. This is the annual sponsorship, the, the community house. That the Wyndham Select would grants a thousand dollar sponsorship that helps fund the various programs. That our residents utilize during this, during the season there. And it helps subsidize the program for townspeople.
I think in particular, this started when they started the concerts at Patton Park. And they needed some seed money to have those and they've become very successful. And this is either the, certainly three or four years of contributing towards that every year. Comments or questions on that? Doesn't look like it. Take a motion, please.
Hey, moves that the Wyndham Select Board vote to grant the $1,000 annual sponsorship of the community house.
Second.
Okay. We'll take a vote, all in favor of granting this $1,000 sponsorship. Excuse me, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Unanimous for that, they're, they do a wonderful job. And, and I think the concerts in the park, which probably are going to get even more popular, have been able to be held even during COVID, I think, are a great thing. So moving on to be in new business, another, another annual event for us. It's a, I don't know how many years. But the Melody Miles race is going on. I, I recall that my kids were still in school because I was involved in timing that race, the very first race they had, a very long time ago. So, Tom, do you want to speak to this? Just to give us a little background?
Yeah, I don't know historically because I haven't been up here for. One of their races and trust me, if my toe healed by then, I might even be in it myself. But we've met with the Public Safety Department, said, given their recommendations. And this just requires vote of the Select Board to approve the race on May, May 28th.
Just looking at the, again, at the email or the letter they sent us, it's the 26th Annual Melody Mile Race. I'm kind of sad I looked at that, feeling really old now. But it is, it is a great, a great event. Are there comments or questions on this? If not, take a motion.
Hey, moves that the Wyndham Select Board vote to approve the Melody Miles race dated May 28th, 2022. In conjunction with all conditions from our Public Safety Departments.
Second.
Okay, we'll. Take a vote on whether to approve this, this race and all of its associated activities. Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Catherine, yes. So unanimous on that one. It's a very fun event for anyone who has never participated. There's a little music, a little running, some, some walking, but a very, very fun event. We wish them the best and hope it's a really lovely day because it helps when it's, when the weather is nice. The next thing on our agenda is, and I think Tom maybe started this, but this is an update on the COVID-19 test kits. Did you have anything further on that, Tom?
Yeah, we received a various number of kits for testing. I have met with Elder Years Affairs Director, Mr. Reynolds. And we will be issuing those in conjunction with the Health Department. It'll be on our website, I believe there will be a maximum of, I think, four kits. Per family. And Mr. Reynolds will be coordinating that with our Health Department to how we keeping track and going forward. He has them in his possession as of now.
We, we received. A week or so ago, I think, an email from our public health nurse who was very interested in. Using the time between now and town meeting to not only. Distribute some test kits, but do we have some masks as well, I think? So I'm, I'm sure Jim Reynolds will coordinate with our public health nurse. So that she has access to something if she, if she wants to be part of the distribution. Is that a fair statement? Okay. Okay, that's that. The next is an interesting conversation, I, I'm gonna look, but I, I thought I saw Margaret here earlier. Margaret Hoffman is here, thank you. We have, there is a state zoning issue or regulation. I don't know, you'll have to tell us what it's actually called, that's been talked about a lot and that we. Have, or do a response to, it's a bit complicated and we have the best expert that I know. Margaret Hoffman is here to give us a bit of a presentation on what this DHCD MBTA Regional Housing Zoning issue is.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Catherine.
Thank you.
So I have a little presentation, a little PowerPoint, if it's okay if I bring that up?
Sure.
Okay.
We like pictures.
Yeah, there's no pictures, it's very, I have to tell you.
Oh, okay.
Lots of words. All right, I'm gonna just click, I think I'm a co-host. Okay, so I'm gonna bring that up and share. Let's see, can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, let me do from the beginning, okay. So thank you for having me. This is something that the Select Board is required to get.
Excuse me, Margaret, we're in the middle of your presentation, you didn't start from the beginning.
Right.
We're in slide 13.
All right, let me go back. Sorry. Yeah. Hey, let's see. Hold on. How's that?
Perfect. I bet that, that looks great.
So let me.
Thank you, Diane.
Oh, no, you know what? It's not working for me. Hold on, there we go, okay. So this is called the MBTA Communities Legislation. It was enacted as part of an economic development bill that was signed in January of 2021. The zoning portion of it, it's called the Zoning Act, is, requires that all MBTA communities. Have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted by right. So this was the legal language that was in the legislation. So I just want to let you know, Wentham is considered a commuter rail community under this legislation. Because we are, have the commuter rail station at the Hamilton Wentham Station. So. The reason that the state enacted this legislation was to address the housing crisis in Massachusetts. I'm sure everyone's heard about it, everyone's aware that there's not enough housing in Massachusetts. MAPC estimates that we need more than 400,000 housing units by 2040, if we're gonna keep growing our economic base. It's to encourage transit oriented housing, that's why they chose the areas around MBTA stations and other types of. Public transportation and they are trying to encourage housing for families. The MBTA legislation, it's not a mandate to create any housing. Some people are getting confused about that, they're thinking, is this 40B? Does this mean we have to create all of this multifamily housing in our community? It is not that at all. Most of this development, if it occurs, and there's still a big if, would mostly be done by private developers. Towns are not responsible to ensure that any housing is built. We just have to create a zoning district that allows for multifamily housing. We won't have to expend any funds to create any housing. However, it's still unclear, but it seems that if it, once it goes through and is finalized. The towns will be responsible for the increased demands on infrastructure, you know, water, school services and things. So again, nothing of this is written in stone. There's the, the regulations have been drafted and they're looking for comments at this point. So that's why I'm giving you this presentation. Some of the statutory requirements that they've come up with under the new guidelines. Which again, are not finalized. The MBTA communities must create zoning districts that allow multifamily housing by right. You can't require special permits, but we do believe there will be site plan approval allowed. So towns will be able to at least see the projects, have some say to make sure that they adhere to. You know, septic requirements, parking, things like that. In, in these draft guidelines, they define multifamily housing as a building with three or more residential units. Or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential unit in each building. This district must be of reasonable size. It cannot be less than 50 acres. The minimum gross density that you have to allow is 15 units per acre. They base that, they say that a half a mile, if you, if you take 50 acres and you have 15, you allow 15 units per acre. There's a minimum of 750 units that could be built in that area. It can't be more than a half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway, ferry terminal or bus station. If applicable, that means that some communities may have. A, a train station or something, but there's really no possibility for development within the half mile. So they may be allowed to create their zoning district in another area of the town. You cannot age restrict any of this housing and it's supposed to be suitable for families with children. So they're saying that you cannot regulate the number of bedrooms. You know, you can't say they can only be one bedroom. They're also saying you can't regulate that it be more than one bedroom. Or, you know, you can't say that it's two bedrooms or more, which I, in my opinion, would accommodate family housing much better. But so the, currently the regulations say you, you cannot regulate any, the number of bedrooms. Whoops. I just want to show you a map and I, this picture probably isn't very good or very seeable on the. On Zoom, but this is the circle, which is approximately the half mile radius around the train station. So this red line is the MBTA property. So as you can see in Wentham, it goes in down Main Street and then over to Larch Row. And up past, this is Enon Village and then these are, I believe this is Miles River. And Wetlands and some other properties just off of Walnut Street. If you do not, cities that, towns that don't comply with these requirements are going to be ineligible for certain funding. Certain funding through the state. Mass Works is one of them, and I want to let you know that I haven't found any specific. Times that we've gotten money from Mass Works, I don't know, it's typically larger projects, infrastructure that gets Mass Works money. I don't know that Wentham's ever gotten any. The Housing Choice Program, which Wentham does not qualify for. And Local Capital Projects Funds, which also I don't see that Wentham's ever used these. So, you know, that being said, there are some communities who are saying, we don't need your money, we're not gonna comply with this, we don't care. The state, of course, has put in this little caveat that the DHCD may, in its discretion. Take non-compliance into consideration when making other discretionary grant awards. So they've got that little caveat that says, yes, but if you don't comply, we may not give you other money also. So. And again, this is not completely finalized, but I, I believe that's one of the conditions in the guidelines. So I want to give you a couple little, the timeframe for what we have to do as a community to comply now. The states are saying, in order to be in compliance now, you only have to do a few things. What we're doing tonight is one of them, to submit, to let the Select Board know what these guidelines are. Which you have gotten a copy of them in your packets and also there's a link to them, I'll have a link on this. This PowerPoint presentation. By March 31st. They're expecting comments on the draft guidelines. The. Many communities are already submitting their comments. I've actually read through it a little bit, I submitted a couple of things, I submitted a question on some things. So by March 31st, the state wants all of, everyone's comments. By May 2nd, the town has to submit a community information form. That is simply a form with our information on it stating that we had this meeting. We have to put the date of this meeting and let the state know that you've been informed about these draft guidelines and you. Understand, you know, this MBTA community's legislation is happening. December 31st, by the end of this year, we, there's a, an interim compliance. So. What they're asking for essentially is town to tell the state. Here's what we are trying to do, here's our plan. We, we don't have to have our, our zoning created by then. And it's a little bit later for. Commuter rails towns, which we are. So then we have until July 2023 for DHCD to approve an action plan. And then December 31st, 2024 is our deadline to adopt the new zoning. My feeling here is these deadlines will get challenged, communities are really scrambling to understand all this. And once guidelines are, I said, I guess finalized, communities will then look at them and say, all right, how do we really comply now? And then we'll, we'll move on from there. But I think right now, our important deadline is this May 2nd to get the information form filled out. Also, the deadline to submit comments. I don't know whether this board wants to submit comments as a group, or if you have all had a chance to look at the regulations. And the guidelines and maybe have your own comments, but that's something we can discuss in a little bit. So I've talked to other planners, I've, you know, been to us, to several webinars on, on this topic. Seems to be one every week. Mass Municipal Lawyers Association has had them, Community Pres. The CHAPA, they have it, MHP, they, everyone's having webinars and, and sessions on this. So some of the things that have come up. That people feel that the state is not taking into consideration the impacts that this is gonna have on local communities, their infrastructure, our character. There's also concerns about septic. We, we're not a sewerage community, I mean, a sewer community, so septic systems have to be developed. And is there soil, you know? Septic systems have to be developed and is their soil, you know, appropriate. Anything that's built though, will have to conform to Title Five. So looking at Wenham in particular, that half mile from the train station. A lot of those properties are, some of them have conservation restrictions on them. There is some business zone there. Miles River and all the wetlands that are over there are certainly a concern. Whether the soil is suitable. There's a lot of smaller lots with single family homes. How is it going to impact them? Of course, we know Route One A is the historic district. Is traffic going to be a concern, you know? Water capacity being part of the Ipswich River Watershed Association. So those are some of those really specific to Wenham. And I think as we get deeper into creating our regulations, we'll identify other issues. And I think that will have an impact on where our district will end up being. Some other things that I've heard is that these minimum capacity of units, it doesn't take into consideration. The actual levels of use of these M B T A stations. There's no affordability component required. So I'm not sure how that's going to impact subsidized housing inventory numbers. Hamilton and Wenham share this commuter rail station. They're saying that within a half a mile of, of the half mile radius, we have to each create a fifty acre. Overlay district. That means a potential of fifteen hundred housing units. Within a half mile of, new housing units within a half a mile of this train station, which is absurd, but. So. The base calculation for the number of units that a community has to zone for is. Based on what type of community you are. So we're a commuter rail community, so that means fifteen percent. Of our housing stock is that number that they, that we thought we would have to go for. That would be about two hundred ten units because we have fourteen hundred, approximately fourteen hundred year, you know, year round units. So these are kind of approximate numbers. But the minimum that the state is saying that any community has to zone for is seven hundred and fifty. Even in Wenham. So that's half of our housing stock or even more is. Could be, could potentially be developed in this district. There are other communities in Massachusetts that are impacted by this even, even more greatly. Where they're up to seventy percent of their housing stock would be seven hundred and fifty units. There's some, some of the really smaller communities. So. Those numbers, they're unrealistic, you know, and, and again. We're not saying that you have to develop seven hundred and fifty units of housing in your community. They're just saying you have to have a zone that could accommodate that. So another one of the issues, you know, is the traffic. So their goal is to create housing where everyone's going to use the. The train. And I mean, I don't think all of these people are going to end up just taking the train everywhere. And there are some studies that have actually go against that logic. They're saying that, you know, most people, especially up here. They don't, they don't really take the train into, into work that much. They're not utilizing the trains for that. You know, is multifamily housing the best type of housing for families? Are there other options that could be looked at? So there's going to be impact on schools and local services if the state is actually. Creates what they hope, or if this creates what the state hopes. You know, if additional family housing is going to create impacts on schools. That's not altogether proven based on multifamily housing that you get that many more students, but. I, I think most communities are concerned with that. It's, it's, it is a fear. So other, you know, local services, water, infrastructure. You know, roads, traffic, all those things are certainly going to be concerns. So our next steps are for us to submit comments on these draft guidelines if we have any by March thirty first. So there's a, a link to the draft guidelines, but I know you all, you three have them already. And I'm just wondering if you want to submit a letter from the community. It would be signed by the Board of Selectmen. Select Board, sorry. And you, you know, we could just pull together our thoughts, put them on paper and send them in or. We could, you go online actually and submit your comments, but we could upload a document if you choose to do it that way. So we can, we can discuss that in a few minutes, but. After that, then we can complete the community information form, which I can do and I can do that after tonight's meeting and get that submitted, certainly by May. One of the other requirements is that we submit updated G I S parcel maps. I'm working with C A I Technologies right now to determine whether our parcel maps are updated. We did hear that the state was going to contact all the communities that didn't have updated. We haven't heard them. And then I think the next step is to wait and wait and see what the state response is to all the comments that. They're going to get on these draft guidelines. And then wait for the challenges that I really think communities are going to start to. Take to court. I, I just see this as. You know, the state has good intentions, of course. They had great intentions and we're hoping that we know we need more housing and we hope that. There's a way to create that housing, but I think for most communities, this is an imbalance and it's, it's not something that. Is going to be well received. I do believe that you'll see many communities challenging this in court. So I wanted to share with you one example of. What a, a multifamily project might be like. So I know you, you. Probably, probably most of you familiar with the Willow Street project in Hamilton. Was a Harbor Lake project. It was a forty B, so it was built on less than an acre of land and it has nineteen units. Eighteen units of housing. So when you think about, well, you know, how much housing can they really build on an acre or, you know, on, on a, on a lot? When they say fifteen, minimum of fifteen units per acre, this is something that, this is how it could be created. So this project. It's recently, it's being built now, I know. Actually, I think their, their lottery is open for applicants to. To, to rent these units. But they were able to get eighteen units plus, the first floor is going to have a bakery, I believe, on it. And I'm just going to show you, this is their site plan. So they, they have like fourteen, forty-three thousand. Four hundred and eighty-seven square feet on this lot. They were able to get a septic system in that accommodated this building. With new technology and septic. It's, it's not unheard of to, to create projects like this. So just, that's just kind of a visual for you. So you get an idea of what a project could look like on an acre of land. And. You know, my, my, I'm not overly concerned that we're going to be inundated with applications for multifamily housing. We absolutely do not have to approve anything and don't have to accept multifamily housing. Right now, until we, you know, compliance deadlines hit. So I see this in a couple of years. This is going to be something that we have to deal with. We don't have to deal with it right now in that way, like we're not going to be looking at applications, but. I think people may start to think about their own properties and in Wenham. You know, if someone has three acres of land and all of a sudden they see this as a. You know, cha-ching, you know, we can get a developer to come in here and the town can't stop us from building it. I see those as some of the concerns and I see concerns for residents whose neighbors decide to do something like this. Well, I think we, there's still a lot of unanswered questions. We have a lot of thinking to do about this. And determination to, to be made about where and how and, and what it's going to look like for Wenham. So if you, you have any questions. Love to answer them if I can.
Questions, Gary, Diane?
So I've read through the guidelines and I think the most important thing for the public right now is, as Margaret said, this is not. A overnight thing that all these houses are going to put in, but it's certainly going to take. No wide ranging input from multiple committees and boards in town to figure out the details in this. I guess the real question right now is, does the select board want to put comments in? Prep for next Tuesday, the twenty ninth? And if it's online, I believe Margaret said that we can get them in by time, but I think. What I saw that affects one the most is the, the infrastructure cost and the availability of water and septic. And what'll do the schools, so you might want to comment on those.
Diane, do you have anything you want?
Yeah, Margaret, so it says they don't, if this, we put in a zone, we find a zone, we make a zone. It allows for these kind of developments or buildings. By right, not by special permit, but they still have to follow zoning law. They can't just do whatever they want, correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
They, yes, they'll have to follow some zoning, meaning setbacks, things like that, but not use, no, we. Yeah, there'll be some zoning they'll have to follow, but you know. We probably will have a hard time zoning for. I don't know about height. I think setbacks and then there will be an opportunity for site plan approval. So we'll be able to say, you know, parking. The state though is going to encourage limited parking requirements. That's, that can be. A challenge in some communities. So, yeah, so we don't know exactly yet what it is we're going to be able to require. But I'm certain there'll, there will be some things we can say, you know, setbacks. Things like that.
Something, not, okay, so I, I misunderstood that a little bit. So and the other thing you had mentioned, there's an interim compliance deadline for M B T A communities. But being a commuter rail community, is there a deadline for this interim compliance or no?
No, I'm sorry Diane, M B T A communities is the general phrase for all.
Okay, so there is an interim.
Yeah, yeah. And then there are different categories of those M B T A communities.
Okay.
Yep, so this interim compliance is just getting this community information form filled out by May. And then by the end of this year, having some discussion. About what we plan to do, what, what, what are we looking at doing? We'll let the state know about that. And then again, not really having to have our zoning created until twenty twenty four.
Okay.
So I've spent a little time trying, trying to understand this. It's, you know, pretty complicated and a little bit. Moving parts, but my overall impression. And I, I agree with all of the issues you've brought forward, but it feels like the legislature is trying to solve. A, a real, you know, a real actual problem in the state with a one size fits all solution. And that's where I have an issue with this because, you know, you look at numbers, seven hundred and fifty. Units that we would need to build, you know, there are just so, so many things like that. So certainly we're going to have to look at this carefully and we're going to have to understand it. When I read that they were going to. Even if we had zoning, to your point, I think even if we had zoning or planning. Site requirements that would require a certain number of parking spaces for a certain number of units, well, those were, were going to not. Count. They were not going to be, we were not going to be allowed to continue to do that because again, they have this. Impression that everybody, I guess, is going to take the train so they don't need to have a car and they don't need to park. And especially since these, well, I won't say especially since they're not affordable, but in general. Any developer can build these and to constrain them on parking, I think, again, is a bit of an issue. I honestly don't think that, so it was the, the development behind. On Willow Street is actually a lovely development. But I, I feel like there were some things that they were allowed to do because they're a forty, a forty B development. Which my, which, which a non forty B developer might not be willing to do or might not, may not be able to take. Be able to take the state subsidies. The wetlands, I mean, there are just so many things that are not unique to Wenham, but make it almost. Untenable or impossible to comply with everything that at least I've read so far. So, yeah, talking about it some more, maybe it's a good thing it dovetails a little bit with the master plan. Maybe there's some input that we can get. At least community input on it. I would love to be able to. Send in some comments or some kind of a formal, a, a letter. I think it needs to be one that comes from the board, not individually. And for me, I think that it. Many of the issues that you have concerns about are ones that I would have concerns about too. I don't know how the other board members feel, but I wondered, Margaret, if, if, if Diane and Gary agree. I wonder if you could draft something that takes into account some of the things that we've heard tonight. Our willingness to certainly, you know. Look at this, build more housing, but also some of the concerns that we have with the legislation that may be able to be changed. Or modified moving forward before it's finalized. If you could draft something and, and get it to Tom, then maybe at our next meeting, we can take a look at it and. And, and see if, you know, it's something that we want to send.
Yeah, absolutely. I would ask though, if you, if you have comments, why don't you email them to me? If you each have just thoughts, your concerns, email them to me and I will incorporate those into a letter.
Okay.
And so I'm looking at my calendar. So next, next Tuesday is the twenty ninth. So I, I will get this ready for you. If you send them to me, I can do this on Thursday, this week. And put it together and get it to you, you know, Friday or Monday. And have it on your agenda for next week. And then you can decide whether you want to send that in.
Is this something that the board would like to, to do, would like to ask Margaret to do? We have comments that we sent to her and along with her comments, write a letter. Is that? Are we interested in that?
Sounds like a great idea.
Yes, I think we need to establish a track record with the, with the state from the, right from the beginning that we're interested and have concerns.
Exactly, that's, that's my thinking, exactly. Okay, so that means that we need to get any comments that we have to Margaret by Thursday. Right? Is that what you said?
That would be great, yeah, that, that will give me time to get them done for you by next Tuesday.
Okay, and. We'll make sure to put something on, on the agenda. And I, I guess at this point, you know, there's so many issues that I guess this letter. Is a sort of a letter of general concerns at, at this point.
Yeah, and that's what most communities are sending in. They're sending in this general, you know, concern. M A P C has drafted their concerns also. I think everyone has the same idea, Catherine, and I think you said it very well, that they've created this, you know. Blanket thing for everybody, that everyone is going to be affected the same way, but they're not, you know. This legislation is going to impact different communities much differently, but we're all expected to do the same thing, so.
Right, right. It doesn't seem realistic. Not unusual, but not realistic.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want me to take questions from anyone else in the audience or if you're.
Um, let's see, how are we doing for time? I think. Yeah, I think, sure, we've got folks here. Let's, I think we really only have about five minutes, but we could take a couple of questions if there's anyone. Watching that has a question on this particular issue or a comment and would like to. Put your name in the chat. I'd say raise your hand, but I can't see everyone, so putting your name in the chat is the most reliable. Or, you know, if you'd like to. If you have questions, I would say contact Margaret directly because she's certainly more of an expert, at least I know than I am. But if there are comments that you'd like included for the select board to include. You know, send them to us and, and we'll include them in our comments. I don't see anyone in the chat right now. I feel like as, as more people read about this and I. I have found. The F A Qs are sometimes more useful than some of the documents, at least they lead you to think about questions. lead you to think about questions that you might have to go to a certain part of the document that you want to read more about. So, or folks who want to know more, I think, uh, there's plenty of documentation online, but the.
There's, there's a lot online, you just need to, you can do a search for MBTA communities and on mass.gov and it brings you to all of the information about it.
Well, I'll know a lot more about it in the, in the months to come. All right, well, thank you very much, Margaret.
Thank you.
Well, we'll see how we go with that, uh, but we'll get something to you on Thursday, by Thursday, probably on Thursday. Realistically.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, okay, if we are moving on, um, and our agenda times are a little different than real time. Um, but the first item that we have um, in our old business is a, a review and approval of the updated TA job description. This, my word, I, I, I did add the word final in there, but it's a, it's wishful thinking on my part. Because I think we're, we've gotten to the point where everybody's comments and, and concerns are addressed, but it certainly isn't a final review if, if the board has further questions. But what I've done, and I, it's not yet in the packet, but every, the, the, um, so I'm hoping that Michelle will update the packet when it goes online. But what I did for this week was to take the last week's final version, um, and all the, and the comments that were made uh, and try to incorporate them into this latest version, which um, I don't know if we have the ability to screen share on, but I can talk about.
I'm sorry, you can't see it, the job description now?
Uh, no.
Okay, hold on a second, sorry, I don't know why it does that.
Okay. So mo- most of this, and especially this first page, is, has been the same through several iterations. So unless anyone has any new comments um, from the board on this page, I, I didn't make any changes because we didn't have any comments. Um, but if you go to the next page, um, and this is honestly one area where we, we may choose to uh, approve this pending some further review. So we took, we talked a lot about appointments and who makes what appointments and I, I, um, the, the general comment that's on the top, appoints and in appropriate circumstances removes, blah, blah, blah. Um, employees of the town for whom no other method of selection is provided. That was where we got kind of stuck, because it's not very specific. So in an effort to at least begin looking at what, this is not just what the TA appoints, but how appointments happen. I started to put together a chart, I noticed I'm missing a line, sorry. It, it's there, but it's not as thick, um, of, of the various positions that, that I knew of, and these are mostly positions that um, require a TA recommendation and s- select board approval. But it gives some idea of what, what positions, um, like the department has the directors. The TA makes the appointment with select board approval. Treasurer, collector, by statute, the select board has to approve that, same with the assistant. Um, so it, it lists the, the general positions, um, and so anything that sort of isn't, I guess the way this is uh, written, anything that isn't in this table, and I'm not saying the table is absolutely complete, but anything that isn't in this table is uh, meant to be a, a direct appointment of the um, town administrator. So I couldn't include every single employee, mechanic or, uh, you know, various DPW employees, but if they're not on this table, then they, they are appointed uh, typically directly from the, by the uh, TA. And these are not appointments, in a way, appointing authority is a funny thing to talk about here, because it's not appointments as in boards and committees. These are actually hiring appointments. So they're actually, I mean, the private sector, we would call them hires, not appointments. But, so I guess what I'm looking for tonight is, is what, what do we think about the, this sort of format? Does it help?
I think it helps, um, I'm just trying to think of all the employees and everybody, um, and one that just came to mind that might have to be on this list, would be like a burial agent. Because isn't that someone that we actually appoint?
It's cemetery commission, the recommendation, select board appointment.
But is it a paid, is that a paid position?
Yes.
An employee, okay. So, all right, that's what I, what I was trying to, um,
To grasp, I know, yeah.
Yeah, um. Uh, okay, so these, this is, um, if a, when our new TA comes on and says, well, who, who, who is responsible for appointing the deputy fire chief? Hopefully this is a chart that they can look at, and if it's not on this chart, it probably means that they, that TA has sort of direct appointment. And I can, you know, a- add burial agent.
So although I, although I usually don't like that kind of, if it's not here, then it's done a different way. But um, I think it's, there's too much that is done the other way to make the chart the opposite way. Does that make sense? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, it does, that was exactly my rationale. I honestly was trying to work a little bit with what we had too, so.
I think, I think it's, we probably need to just brainstorm, make sure we have everybody here that needs to be here, and then otherwise I think it's pretty, written pretty well. I think.
Um, so, as I said, maybe when we get to the motion, we'll, if everything else is okay, we can uh, approve it pending a review, a final review of that table and anyone who's got any additions, um, you know, please let me know. It does, there was something that we talked about last time that I, I did some research on, um. I don't know, actually it's in a different section. Uh, yeah, so that's, that's actually, I think, the only real change I made on that. So if that's.
And it's a fluid, it'll always be a fluid document, so if something changes, say with the new collaboration with Hamilton as the assessors.
Right.
The Board of Assessors would not actually be hiring the principal assessor, because that would be a shared service, right?
Well, it, the shared service that I'm aware of now does have a, a, a assessor, it's, I think it's called a maybe an assistant assessor, the title may be different, but it's someone who's hired in Wenham, by Wenham. Um, so I think that one probably still would go through the Board of Assessors. Um, but to your point Diane, this is, we need to, so this document's origi- originated in two thousand fourteen, and this is the first overhaul it's had. So, like so many things, I, you know, short timer, but uh, my recommendation is that um, we don't wait till we're hiring a new TA to, to look at this, that it, we actually take a review of it and our new town administrator takes a look at it and it, it is, you know, it's not meant to not be able to be updated.
Which is the same with policies that we're supposed to be working on anyway, there should be some sort of rotation of review of all these things.
Absolutely right. So if we, the next place where I think we had comments last week is actually in section um, hmm, well, in section four, which is on the next page, I don't want to get into this too much, but I, I actually, uh, this is, this is the town supervisor responsibilities, um, is really from the original two thousand and fourteen, and at first I wasn't sure why it was there. But um, some years ago, there was a, I thought it was a bylaw, not sure. But it basically gave the town administrator the authority to supervise and direct with respect to general operations. All appointed and elected department heads and principal deputies or agents, you know, little legalese here, or part-time or volunteers, elected and appointed boards and officers. And it, it doesn't mean that they report to the town administrator, but when I started to look into this, I think the intention of this was that the town administrator at the select, you know, uh, the select boards, uh, to under our direction. Everyone follows the same general operations. So if there's a general, I'll use a very simple example. The town hall is open and, and there are hours of operation for the town hall, then everyone who works in town hall is expected to follow those general operations, and it's the TA who en- enforces those or oversees those, supervises those. So I, I think um, at, at, that was an important point at some point in our history, so I've left it in, but again, this is just a draft. Um. I wish, I need to be looking at my other paper here, where else did I make a change? There was, um, so appointments. I, I shouldn't say I made a change, I took the board's input and incorporated it into the document. Um, public relations, not too much. Their records maintenance, pretty standard. Um, okay, so on section nine, last, last meeting, which I guess was last week, it's facilities maintenance and information technology. Well, that's what it's called now, um. Gary brought up the issue of, you know, we didn't address information technology, so, and this seemed like the input was to sort of add it here. So um, town administrator is responsible for the use and maintenance of all town information technology as well as land and buildings, and it's a general term, but I, hopefully that covers the fact that ultimately, um, the TA has the responsibility for IT. Over responsibility. And this is the one um, that I had to do some research on, because I didn't understand why it said land and buildings other than those under the control of the school committee, I get that, and the library trustees. Um, I did some research on the charter, I guess, or the role of the library, library trustees, and they have under their purview the library building, the facility maintenance of the library building. So this indeed, we were, uh, there was a temptation to take it out, but that actually is um, codified. Um, the, this, the, the, we talked last week about budget, which was a section that had been, I think, omitted, but is back in there. Um, and that, the suggestion that was made, the only suggestion changed was that um, the town administrator prepares and presents at the select board's direction to the finance committee, an annual operating budget, all the rest is the same, and then at the end, the town administrator works in collaboration with the finance director in preparing the budget required under this section. I think that's the way we talked about it last week.
Yes.
Um, yeah, it's all right, I'm, I'm counting on you guys to spot me if I'm missing something, and I think hmm, those were all of the changes that, that we identified last week from the version that we had had before. Um, so, are we? Other than that chart, which we know we need to look at again, are, are we, how folks have questions or comments about how ready this is for us to approve?
Did Tom have his hand up there?
I did, Gary, but this may be covered somewhere else. Under the budget section, ten point oh, uh, last line. Um, the town administrator works in collaboration with the finance director. Uh, maybe add in the appropriate depart- and the appropriate department head.
Uh, I thought it said that, but maybe it doesn't. So that could easily be, the town administrator works in collaboration with the finance director and department heads.
Right.
In preparing your budget requests?
Correct.
That, okay.
You just don't want to have a town administrator um, do this on his or her own without working with the department heads on the budget.
Right.
So the first line does say something about, um, prepares a schedule for submission of information by departments of the town.
Oh.
Town should probably be capitalized, but um, it's not exactly working with them.
Right.
I think maybe it should be, rather than change that sentence, I would change the first sentence.
Okay.
Along with the, uh, something of, my town administration's, it's like what structure.
Maybe, I, I'm not exactly sure what a schedule of submissions is, but maybe it's um, an annual operating budget along with hmm, consultation or recommendations? I don't know what the word is.
The annual budget should have that anyway, so it's an annual budget that was prepared with, with collaboration with the department heads? Something like that, or is that, am I out of the way on that?
Um. I don't, I, I think it might be cleaner to do what, um.
Tom said?
To, what Tom said, to, to make sure that the town administrator and make it clear altogether in one line, that this budget um, that he, he, she needs to work in collaboration with the finance director and the department heads into preparing the budgets required under the section.
Yeah, I always forget that last line, under, required under this section, it's kind of like a, a conclusion paragraph, sentence for the paragraph, so that's fine, I get it, that makes sense.
Okay. Um.
Jim Purdy does have his hand up.
Yeah, I see, I, again, I can't see everyone's hands, but I did see Jim. Jim, do you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, just a point of clarification, I guess. So the first line, the town administrator prepares and presents at the select board's direction to the finance committee, well, I, I'm confused about that, the finance committee and its current bylaws and directions is a, uh, independent committee um, that develops the budget and preparation of the budget with the finance director, it's just I, I just, I just need clarification at the, at the select board's direction, what does that mean?
Okay, so it's an awkward sentence, but I will admit, but I think what it is trying to say is really mimicking what is done, is that before the town admini- so the, let me work backwards, the budget, the initial budget that the finance committee gets is called the town administrator or the administration's budget. So before that, they work with the department heads and others to come up with a budget. But before that, at the very beginning of the process, there has historically, uh, meant to be um, an overarching policy direction for the budget. So the select board, early on, before any numbers are actually put together, are meant to have a conversation and say something like um, we would like to see level services in this budget, and if there's anything that anyone needs beyond that, we would like to see some, you know, uh, further documentation. So that's what that, that's what the select board direction is meant to be. Um, and it's in the beginning paragraph because it, or pet- sentence, because it happens first.
I think you said it better, you just said it better, you should probably change that and say at the, um, after the select board's policy or
Yeah. At.
Direction, use direction, the town administrator works with the department heads to put together an administrative budget that he brings to the FinCon. Like if we just start from the beginning in the sentence.
Okay. I hear you, I, I, I get it, I, it's, like I said, it's an awkward sentence. But if, the way I explained it to Jim, although it's not exactly written clearly, does that match more of what your understanding of what happens? The explanation, like the words?
But the explanation in terms of setting policy, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think histor- historically, uh, the finance committee has always had an autonomous function in terms of budget development. So, uh, of course we report at the end of the process, at the end of the day, we, of course, we report up through and it's advisory to the select board. But I think the initial, the initial stages, I guess, is, is, I just want to uh, be clear, because when you read the beginning of the role of the select board, every, every minute, uh, set of minutes, for example, it's fairly well, very, very clearly spelled out in terms of the autonomy, in terms of uh, developing information, requesting information from every board, every committee, every, and, and so on. That, that's what I just want to, I think is important to maintain, uh, for finance committees going forward, that's all.
So I think there, there are, um, similar to the school committee, where the first budget that is presented to the school committee is the superintendent's budget, and then there's a school committee budget. Um, but the school committee has probably given them some, you know, feedback, I think. what you're saying is true. It, you're, it, but it's I'm not sure the role of FinCon is to develop the budget. I think that's the role of the town administrator. They develop a budget, not the budget, but a, he or she develops a budget, working with like again, under the overarching principle that, or policy set by the select board, they develop a budget collaboratively with all these people, which they then present to the FinCon. At that point, it's the FinCon's budget to um change, alter, ask questions, and ultimately, it's that that budget that is presented to town meeting. So it is autonomous, but it's not in the development of the initial budget.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm happy to take a stab at that again, unless someone else would like to. Um, and, and, you know, send that out later this week um so that we can vote a final file, uh, if we would like to do that for next week's, the week's meeting.
How about? How about the town administrator prepares in accordance with the select board's annual policy and presents the finance committee an annual operating budget along with a schedule for submission of information by the towns that by the uh departments of the town?
Okay. Sounds okay to me.
So it, put it in se- basically putting it in sequence that the town administrator does the first thing, he prepares in accordance with the select board's annual policy and presents to the finance committee the second thing, an uh annual operating budget, blah, blah, blah. Something like that.
Yeah. What do you think, Diane?
Yeah. Yep, yep, that makes sense too.
And Jim, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, yeah, it directs, it directs the policy process.
Yes.
When finance gets into the, into the weeds, if you will.
Right.
Has recommendations and questions, et cetera, et cetera.
And incorporates the schools. You know, then there's all that other stuff that FinCon has to put together.
Right. Okay. Um, so I have most of that language. I can listen to the, to the um recording again. I can ask Catherine Tinsley if she got a little more, more of it than I did. Um, but I'll just add that. I'll just basically add what Gary has said, because we have it on record now, um, along with, I think there were one or two other changes. Add the burial agent to the form. Um, to the chart.
Another quick question. So with Jim here, Jim Purdy, does the town administrator submit the five-year capital plan, or is that now something of the FinCon is working on? Or does it, is it from the TA's office?
The, the, right now, Diane, um, the, the town senior administrators uh developed the five-year capital plan. And that gets incorporated into the planning of what we do year by year for FinCon to look at and see how it fits into the budget. For example, Jackie Breschner hand had historically always done at least the past several years, a five-year plan.
So senior administrators, so department heads?
It could be, well, actually, actually, I was speaking more specifically within town hall. Department heads will submit to a senior administrator.
Okay.
They take that on as a project. FinCon weighs into it as the budgets are presented for capital and operational, and we review that, but we haven't been involved. Now, Gary and I talked about this about over a year ago. Of the development of a long-range capital plan. DSL uh division of, DLS, Division of Local Services, has a whole document on the development of long-range capital planning. And we've kind of done this in bits and pieces, administration, and Gary was wondering about it over a year ago whether FinCon can take this on, and we haven't been able to quite realistically. So that's a whole other question in terms of long-range, uh, long-range capital planning. There is one in Hamilton. Hamilton has a long-range capital planning committee.
Right. I do think that is, again, my recommendation is that that's something that you address, the town addresses in a more formal way or a more substantive way than we have in the past, but if we're going to reflect what if this town, if this job description is going to reflect what we're doing now, we are asking the town administrator to be responsible for collecting all that information presenting a capital plan along with the rest of the budget.
Thank you.
Not say that that shouldn't change, but okay, are, are we possibly at the point where we could say um uh approve the job description as amended? And I'll send it to everyone, and if I didn't amend it appropriately, you, we can get, you know, get it back on an agenda, but if I've amended it as said, we might actually have one. What do you think?
I think so.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you guys for your help, and thank you, Jim, for your help. I will make sure that I get those last things there.
Do we need a formal motion then?
Yes, yes, please. And I think we, there is one uh um on the PowerPoint with the exception of, you know, the edits that we made tonight.
All right, move, move that the Wenham Select Board vote to approve the updated town administrative job description as amended this evening.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of approving the job description as amended, uh, Gary?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. This is
Thank you for working on that.
Painting, paint drying, and I know, I will acknowledge that at the time that we talked about this initially, which I think was October, we talked about having sort of a parallel mirror um plan or job description for the select board, and I think that is a really good idea, but unfortunately, I didn't get to it, so um we've got this at least so far, and I'll leave it to um someone else hopefully to pick up the, the, the final part of that. Okay, unless we have anything more on that, I think that we have one more agenda item, which is annual town meeting issues and updates. And I open this one to the floor, if anyone like um has any concerns or questions. I think that our moderator, Roger, are you here?
Good evening, Catherine. I'm here.
Hey, Roger. So this might be a good, you know, it might be good to have our moderator here, depending on what issues or questions that we have. He's been working really hard. Thank you already for the hard work you've done, Roger. So questions from the board? Anyone have questions or issues that they'd like to bring up relative to a town meeting, which I guess is a week?
I don't have any questions because I don't have any updates. So if I, an update would be nice to see how everything's coming along and whatnot.
Yeah, it would. If it, if it wasn't um constantly changing, I think we, it could be um relative, so that's relative to logistics. Um, anything issues relative to process, and I think that's what we've been updated on is by receiving um uh Roger's script. Um, we have a sense of, you know, how it's going to flow. So it's an opportunity if we, as a board, if we wanted to uh make any comments on anything that's in the script.
And Catherine, um, if I may, I, I'm happy to provide Diane and Gary an update on that.
Okay, sure, please.
Um, so I have uh using the script from, I think it was the 2020 meeting, not last year. But I prepared the script that incorporates all of the preliminary uh material as well as the articles and presenters on the articles. I have circulated that to Catherine, Tom, Trudy, Jim, and Michelle um for uh feedback. Um, once I've gotten their input and made any changes, uh, I'd be happy to uh provide that to you, uh Diane and Gary as well. Um, so that's coming along and um in the next couple of days, I'm, I can provide that to the two of you as well.
Okay, that was my mistake. I understood. I, I was thinking that we had, the select board had gotten, had all gotten that script. I wasn't paying attention to the uh distribution, but, so maybe that will we'll have to continue this. You know, have in um issues and updates next week as well, in addition to anything that you'd like to bring up to, you know, Roger, he's asked for comments on the, on the script, and I think um Tom has said that he's writing the motions. So I guess in general, all things town meeting, I don't, other than the script, I think you guys know pretty much everything that I do. Um, I apologize that we don't have, you know, we're going to have this many seats in this place, and uh, this is the overflow room, and this is what it's going to look like. It's such a fluid situation um that we don't, we, we just don't have all of that.
Do we have a firm date for uh border health input on uh protective measures?
Well, that's a question for Tom. I, 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 I think he's been reaching out. Yes, Tom?
Yep, haven't gotten anything back. I'll follow up again tomorrow.
Okay. I mean, honestly.
I don't think there are any, just, I don't think there is anything that they have to say because I, I don't know.
Yeah. So I, I don't think, I, I think, you know, sort of been operating under the assumption that there really aren't any mitigate, you know, mandated mitigation measures, but trying to be sensitive to the fact that there might be some people who have some concerns. So things that we've talked about, and I'm interested in people's opinions, but things that um Roger has in, uh, suggested and others have talked about is um, we don't know for sure what the capa- we have a little bit of distance, like a three-foot distance built in between chairs um in the, in the gym, and we think that there's capacity in the gym um for as many people as we're likely to have, even with some spacing, but no mask mandate. Um, and we talked about the possibility, and again, until we have a little bit better numbers, hard to finalize, but we talked about using the um multi-purpose room as either overflow, if we think we might need it, or a, a more, a place for people who are more conservative and would like to uh definitely just want to be in a place that's more separate and wearing masks. And we talked about, and that's why I asked about masks. There's some question about whether or not we can offer masks. If we have them, offer them to people as they come into town meeting, if they wish to have a KN or K ninety-five mask.
Um, are we, sorry?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Are we going to have a kind of a final plan to present next Tuesday? We're going to have the warrant hearing Monday, but certainly we ought to let the public know ahead of time before they show up on Saturday just what the plan is, at least in uh seating and the so forth.
Yeah, that's, that would be the goal. It's a little bit of a frustration. Um, we we are waiting for some quotes from audiovisual people, um especially where we're asking for overflow. We're waiting for a final number of capacity. You know, you know, if we put this many, if we put these seats this far apart, how many will actually fit in the room? Um, we haven't received a final number of that. But yeah, let's let's say that's for sure, because you're right. I mean, the reason that we're doing this is to make people comfortable. Um, and if they don't know that we're, what we're doing, and we don't really know what we're doing, it doesn't really do much to add to the comfort level, so.
So
Yeah.
So I guess I'm not really sure what all the, the, the things are that's making it so frustrating or so fluid. Um, the gym is only one size and it's, there's dimensions, and then there's multiple count calculators out there that say so many feet apart, you fit them in here, uh, make up sort of a rubric or a little graph layout. Figure that out. Make that second room a mask-only room and have audiovisual in both places. I mean, I think you just have, we just have to do it, say it, pay for it, and, and share with the public. So I, I don't
Sounds great, Diane.
I know, I know, so I, I, I don't.
So Roger, I think, you know, these are questions that we've been asking, and we, we have a group of people, and we're relying on everybody to just do a piece of it. Um, and uh, it hasn't all come together, but
What, what I will say is at the, the last planning meeting, what I proposed, subject to uh final review based on um confirmation of capacity, and Diane, one of the issues is that it's not just, you know, the chairs, there's also where we're putting screens, where the tables need to get set up, so it's not just an issue of, you know, getting running the chairs for a calculator a- and, you know, finding out what the capacity is. It's a little bit more nuanced than that. Uh, but what the current plan is, is the multi-purpose room as a dedicated mask-required space and have two sides uh in the gym, one where seats would be uh separated by three feet, and one where seats would be in a more traditional alignment. Uh, this would give the voters, the, one of three options in terms of how they choose to sit at town.
So
I think it's important to get that information out by next Tuesday to the public in general.
Well, I will, uh, I'm, go ahead, Roger, I'm sorry.
Garrett, my understanding with the plan is to finalize that as much as possible uh by the end of this week, make that information uh public, and then re- reserve the right if, you know, something happens in terms of an Omicron-type surge to make changes. Because it is still a very dynamic and fluid situation, and we always have to be prepared for uh that type of uh possibility.
So
So, so we can get it up on the website and such?
Yes, um, that's the plan.
That is the plan.
So I didn't I didn't mean to say that it was super easy to do, but um I, I'd like to just offer two thoughts. One, that I think everyone understands that we can make a plan, and then with COVID as it has been for way longer than we thought, things can always change for the worse, and people are ready for that, but I think knowing what our plan is sooner is, is, is better for people, even though they know things might change. And my second thought is just another suggestion for the gym, rather than doing one side regular chairs and the other side separated chairs, maybe do something like pairs of chairs, three feet, feet apart, do a pair. I think we did this at, in the tent, a pair here, and then a single, and then a pair, so um it's
Yeah, Diane, that, that is exactly what we were thinking for the side of the gym where there would be the staggered.
Okay, yeah.
But we did also to increase capacity, particularly if we're using the multi-purpose room as a dedicated space for people who want to be wearing masks and around people who are wearing masks, was to use on one side of the gym, a traditional seating layout to help increase that capacity for people who are more comfortable being closer together and not having the separation.
So almost like all-time regular, and then spaced out a little bit, and then mask-only.
That's exactly right.
Exactly right.
Super easy, yeah, okay.
So it's taken us a little while to come to that and to figure out who are the right people to figure out what some of these things are, and um, we have, we suffer a little bit from a lack of institutional knowledge of the nuts and bolts of what happens behind the scenes, but I think we're close, and yeah, I, I agree. We'll, we'll have something um for our Tuesday meeting that is, that is finalized, um, to the extent that, you know, that it can be. Um, so we'll, we'll make that the objective. And they're going to make a note to put it on the agenda.
And if there's, if there's anything I can do to help, I, I have the nuts and bolts. Trudy was there before, and I've been there the past eight years, so
Right.
In the planning, so if there's anything that anyone has any questions on, you know, that's where I am.
Yeah. Trudy has been, you know, involved in all of this too. Um, when I woke up in the middle of the night, one night and said, wait, voter cards. Who does that? Uh, it was Trudy who said, oh, no, no, I got that, I got that, so. Uh, anyway, I, that's, that's what, that's
We'll be, we'll be using, will we be using clickers?
No, we will not be using clickers. We'll be using voting cards.
Um, there was a fair amount of discussion of that. I think that's ultimately like so many other things, the purview of the moderator, but um he allowed some discussion on that, um someday, maybe we'll be able to do that.
It's certainly something that I think we should continue to study going forward, but the idea for this meeting, where it's the first meeting back inside, is simpler is better.
Got it.
So it's going to be an old-fashioned um town meeting.
Love that.
From that, from that point of view. From that, from that point of view, any, old-fashioned town meeting. Yeah, right.
Town luncheon, yeah.
No, no lunch. A lot of people have asked about lunch.
I know.
And unfortunately, no, no lunch, we can say that for sure, but I, I hope that comes back for, for next year. People, you know, they don't really much care what's on the warrant, but they really wanna know about lunch.
Well, thank you for the information. I felt a little out of, out of a loop, so thank you.
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Diane and Gary, if you have any questions that are within the moderators, feel free to reach out. Shoot me an email and, you know, I'll, I'll respond or we can talk, happy to do so.
Great.
So Roger, I know, I noticed, and again, I apologize, I thought we all had the script, but I'll pay more attention in the next couple of weeks to who gets what, but so I noticed that as always, you've like assigned people to answer questions on particular articles. I presume that you, you've talked to those people. I'm trying to think, I, I think the one that I think the only one I'm listed on is the police canvassing, I think. And of course, the police chief is first on that, so I, I assume that you've, you've done such a great job with the rest of it. It all seemed very logical to me or I would have commented, but I'm, I'm assuming that all the people who are on that list know that they're, will know that they're on the list.
Other than the, so Gary and Diane, for your information, the two other select board articles or select board sponsor articles in addition to the solicitation article, one is the building permit amendment to the prior town meeting vote to set, affirm that the building permit for the Harbor Lake project has been issued. And the other is the three to five select board size. I had slotted in one of you each as the person to offer the motion. You'll see that when I circulate the drafts of script to you as well. And Jim, I think you had your hand up, and I don't know if this was, once I have that revised draft, I'll also circulate to the other members of the FinCon as well, so they can see what motions and articles they're slotted for.
I also was, I, I lost the original script that you sent, Roger. My apologies if you could I lost it in my emails. If you could send that as well, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Probably going to be useful to at least have a draft of that for the warrant hearing because that's, you know, we'll be following along that.
So, so what I'll do is I've gotten some feedback from Trudy and particularly on the other recognitions we made. What I'll do is I will make those revisions tonight and then send around a new draft to the larger group, including you, Gary and Diane, as well as the other members of the FinCon tomorrow.
While we're on the subject, which of the three of us are together, are we gonna present commentary on preparation slides on the three to five question?
Roger, how do you have that configured?
So, right now I have, I believe Diane offering the motion on that, and the reason the way I slotted the three of you in the motions was just based on the chair rotation. So Article nine is the solicitation by law provision, so that went to Catherine. Article twelve is the building permits that went to you, Gary. And Article fourteen is the three to five, so that went to you, Diane. So you would be making the motion and then what I had intended, and this was subject to the discussion of the three to five subcommittee was that the chair of that committee would make a brief presentation on the work that the committee did. And then I would invite a member of the majority to make a three-minute remark on the majority position and invite a member of the minority to make a three-member, three-minute remark on the minority recommendation.
The trouble with that is the issue I, I see it is at the select board level now. And that the town government study committee has no portion in the charge to present to the town meeting, that I think it's the responsibility of the select board to make that presentation.
So Gary, I know you and I have disagreed, excuse me, one second, Roger. I know you and I have disagreed on this before, but when I think about any other committee that has been charged with doing something, charged by this life board with, you know, studying something, that's the, those are the experts. And I feel like they should be making the report. And I think it should be whoever makes the presentation should literally be, I'm not gonna say reading the report because it's long, but, you know, summarizing the facts that are in the report. I certainly, as a select board member, don't feel like I have the depth of knowledge to, to make that presentation. And I don't think there's much precedent for the select board to make a presentation on a study that's been done by another group.
Well, certainly, you know, this, this, you know, this is kind of a special situation in that this originally started as a citizen's petition and the select board accepted it as its responsibility at the, what, last October's town meeting to develop the study group and to present it at the next town meeting. So I think, given the contentious nature of this, I think that you know, I like the idea of both the majority and the minority position being put forward. But I think the select board, having made the recommendation on one plan, that we really ought to see the script at least before what's presented on the subject.
Are you referring to the, the town meeting script or the script of what each presenter would be saying?
Yes, I think the, the script of which, which presenter is coming you know, the exact wording of what's gonna be presented to the town meeting by the majority and the minority.
I, I don't know, well, and obviously I can't weigh, weigh in on what the select board doesn't, does not decide to do. But in terms of what happens on the floor at town meeting, it's my authority to determine who is recognized to speak and on what. If.
Oh, I, I totally agree with you on that, but on the other hand, the town government study committee has no authorization in its charge to go beyond anything but a report to the select board.
That said, each member of that committee is also a citizen and presumably registered voter of the town who if there was no formal presentation, could still get up during the open discussion on the motion.
Quite so, alright.
So if the select board wants to speak on his recommendation, I will certainly, as the moderator, entertain that request. And given the fact that it's a question about the size of the select board, I think the town should have the input of that body. So I would consider that request favorably, I think. But it would be among the three of you to decide who is going to present that view of the select board. And go from there.
Alright.
And then obviously. Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. No, 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 this is, you know, town meeting stuff, frankly, I, I defer to, to you. But I, I wanted to just understand, I think this, there is something that Gary, I think, is asking for, which you know, is doable. I think, Gary, what I'm hearing is, I'm not exactly sure why you have this concern and we don't have to talk about that, but I think you're concerned about the content of the presentation that's made by what we're saying or the script, the moderator saying would be the chairman of the, of the committee. And I think I'm imagining, as was the case when they presented to us, there was a written script that that person, you know, read from, and so I think there probably would be again. And we would have to, we would have to ask him, he's on the call, but not, I will, I won't put him on the spot. But I think if the select board just wanted to have a sense of what the presentation was going to look like, we, we would oftentimes get a presentation from the, a, a copy of the presentation from the superintendent, for instance, before the school presents. I don't, I'm not sure that's, I don't think that's an unreasonable request. That being said, I don't think it's up to us to edit that necessarily, unless it's something that doesn't match what the report says. So is that, but is that part of what you're saying, Gary?
I'm, you know, along that lines, but you know, what the report said, which was not accepted by the board at any point, and the fact that we really developed a new plan after acceptance of the report as to how the election is gonna be held, for what reasons, and how are we going to, you know, actually elect, have the election later on. You know, that needs to be explained as well, and I don't think that was not looked at or was not in the purview of the town government study committee. So I think at some point the select board needs to explain to the public, you know, what that article really says and what the step-by-step process will be after we have that vote at town meeting.
Gary, I think that's a, a very good point and I, I completely agree.
So what, but what you just said there, Gary, was that you want someone on the board of selectmen, I'm sorry, on the select board to state that if this is approved at town meeting, these will be the following steps.
Yes, I think that's, that's that, that was not addressed previously and that, you know, there's gonna be confusion at town meeting for those that haven't been involved in this as to what this two, it's kind of what, the two pages or more of legalese, but they'd need to know exactly what the steps are gonna be. So perhaps if Diane's making the motion, perhaps you can also have a commentary in there as to what the article actually does over the next many months.
So you mean have me speak on behalf of this board?
Yes.
With that, with respect to the, to what we, if approved, this step happens and then that step happens and then that step happens.
Right.
Catherine, what do you say?
There are, I, I'm, I think Gary's right, there are really two parts of this. One that, for whatever reason, this committee was not charged to do, and that is what you just, Gary's talking about. And what is the recommendation, three to five, three or five from the committee? So it does seem to make sense that the committee would say, this is the research that's done and this, we recommend, and I believe that, I know that the majority recommendation was to move to five, and so that, that report that they wrote should be presented as the report. But to Gary's point, there was part two, which is what ended up also in the warrant. That speaks to, okay, well, how are we gonna implement this if, if it's passed? And yeah, that is, those are things that we, the select board decided. So it does, that makes sense for the select board to do that. I just think that's the sort of part two. And, and, and maybe Roger, you can help by explaining from a moderator's point of view, summarizing, okay, this is what we have, this is what we're gonna hear first, and this is what we're gonna hear.
Yep, and, and I think that that's a natural approach and we have the benefit of the fact that I was a member of that committee and know what it did. Obviously, I stained from the recommendation vote because I knew it was gonna come before. I had a strong feeling that the select board would put it on the warrant. But I think that makes a lot of sense, Catherine.
So that would make, I think, if I remember, a small amendment to your, to the script. Um, adding, you know, a process of moving forward if, if yes, kind of explanation.
So a presentation by the board?
Right.
But we have never, have we voted? Have we given our recommendation towards that?
Yes, we have. We had a unanimous vote to recommend favorable action on this article.
The wording was a bit confused back on the eighth there, but yes, reviewing the, the video again, we did, but you know, I, I took that as a, a vote on the article as presented, not for any variations.
What does that mean?
That means I think we need to explain to the public that the article has one path going forward that is approved by the select board. And that's what I hope you will be able to do as you.
Right, so we voted, so we voted. What, what was our vote on? That we proposed the five, moving to five, or we just voted on the process? I'm so sorry, I'm confused.
Yeah, cuz I think if you go back and look at the video, that the wording was set in that it was, we are in favor of the article, which included a process of acceptance vote and later on, a actual election.
Right, and in reality, I'm, I'm, I'm going to have to look back on it, but yes, we do, we did vote to recommend favorable action on the article. But now I'm questioning whether the article acknowledges the fact that what people are voting on is the recommendation to go to five select board members as made by the majority of the committee. And then the implementation as approved by the select board. I'm not even sure that that.
Oh, Tom, oh, so does Roger.
Sorry, as moderator, what the article does is authorize the select board to submit the legislation to increase the select board size from three to five members and implement that change in the manner in which Gary described and is laid out in the warrant article and the special legislation.
Okay.
So we recommended three, nothing, favorable action to move from three to five.
And with a process that we.
And with the process that, yeah.
Right. So that's where the two parts come in. But I, I feel comfortable that Roger can navigate getting us through those two, two somewhat separate presentations. Tom, did you have your hand raised? I'm sorry, I, I'm really bad at.
Sorry, I think.
I just.
I think basically Roger may have been saying the same thing I was gonna state is the vote is to follow the legislation. In the warrant, it has the language for the legislation which states, as Gary's talking about, the steps. You know, town meeting votes, file legislation. Once the legislation is approved, it comes back to your next general election to basically for townwide ratification. Should it be approved for townwide ratification, then the next year the two members, the two new members are up for election.
Right, so that's the second part. That's the implementation that's. Right.
Just thinking about it now, I feel as if it's two separate things that we didn't just separate. We didn't actually recommend whether, I feel like we recommended, or what I voted on was the process if approved. I don't feel like I got the choice to recommend whether I think personally, we should go from a three to five board member. Did I, I must have missed something. But maybe I did.
Kind of feel the same way on that too. We didn't have the wording right on that.
Well, but we had the warrant article and, and I wish I had it in front of me, but I don't. But Roger, I think you're saying that the warrant article.
I, I have it right in front of me if you'd like.
Okay, yes, please. That's what we had in front of us.
Article fourteen, increase select board from three to five members. To see if the town of Wenham will vote to authorize the select board to submit to the general court a special act providing for an increase in the number of members of the select board from three to five, all as set forth below, provided however, the general court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to such bill. Unless the select board approves amendments to the bill prior to the enactment by the general court and provided further that the select board is hereby authorized to approve amendments, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition or take any other action relative. or take any other action relative thereto. And then below that follows the draft special legislation.
Right. Yep, no, you're right.
So that's what we had in front of us and that's what, like all the other articles, vote favorable action on article number blah 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 and the title. Um, but that doesn't mean that it doesn't, there're not two sort of parts of it that are going to require some explanation to, before people are able to even vote. Or if they agree with everything, I mean, you know, we we're talking about this as if, as if it's unamendable. Um, and cer- certainly would be easier if it is. But we need, people need to understand what they're voting on so that they, both parts of it, so that if they they want to amend something, they can. Um, or at least they vote on what they think, they understand what they're voting on. Are we good with this?
Yep, I am.
Gary, are are you good?
Yeah. I just think, you know, it's one of those questions that uh is going to have a lot of questions from the floor unless we upfront, explain it very carefully.
And Gary, I I I agree, and that's why I I would welcome a presentation from the select board as to the process uh and the uh steps that were taken from the time the committee delivered the report to the time that the warrant article was uh on the warrant and the committee took its vote on favorable action. Um, so, you know, that's certainly something I think should and needs to be uh part of this overall presentation on what this warrant article does.
With all that said, and when, I'll I'll draft a sort of quote-unquote presentation from the board and and submit it for you guys to to tweak. Um, but Gary, there's still going to be a lot of questions.
Yes, sure.
Yeah.
Right. I I mean, I would encourage the questions. I would hope that people are going to ask questions, not that they repeat the same questions, but that they ask questions. That would be the goal of the town meeting.
And and this is one of those instances where it'll be, you know, my job as the moderator to determine to whom those questions should be directed and to the extent it concerns, you know, the proposed legislation in the form of it, I would intend to direct those questions to the select board uh rather than the subcommittee.
Mm-hmm.
So like. If there are questions on the subcommittee report, then I would intend to direct those questions to the members of the subcommittee who have presented.
Right. Yeah, there there are going to be a lot of questions. It's a, it's a, it's not, yeah. There will be a lot of questions and we'll just have to, Roger will have to manage us through those questions and we'll have to answer them. And then ultimately, people will just have to decide how they want to vote. How they want to vote.
But ideally, that's what you want at town meeting. You want people to engage and you want them to speak questions. You'd want them to come to the warrant hearing.
Right.
To review. Um, but that's, you know, we don't really want to fly through a town meeting and have everyone just vote yes all the way through. I mean, that's the goal, right? So.
I mean, my my desire is a little even more basic. I, the the report is on the town webpage like up front and center. I really hope that before the town meeting, everyone reads the report. So when there's a summary of the report or a summary of anything else, there's at least some context. But you know, we we don't get to. We can only suggest that.
Yeah.
No. Um, so. Okay.
Tom, Tom is.
Stand up.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you, Tom. Thank you.
One of the probably simplest way, and I can work with Roger on that, and I gotta see if we have the technology in town hall to do this. The easiest way to probably get the information across to people at town meeting is to devise a one-slide flow shot that has the steps. Town meeting approves this, next thing it goes to legislation. Legislation fails, you do not pass go, you do not collect two hundred dollars. You go this way and it passes, the next step goes back to a townwide referendum question in two thousand twenty-three. If it fails, it stops. If if it's approved, it goes to the next step, which is two thousand twenty-four, general election of the two seats. So it just gives you the steps.
It's a great idea.
Goes, and if it, if it fails, it stops.
Will there be a PowerPoint for the, for the whole town meeting?
Yeah.
Will there be a PowerPoint anyway? So we could just add in a slide, right?
Right. Just add a slide as a flow shot, basically showing the steps. And if it passes, if that goes past step one, this is where you go on step two. If step one fails, it ends. Step two fails, it ends. So you, people with the timeline, so people know, these are the dates, these are the steps. And then in two thousand twenty-four, if everything passes, you vote for your two candidates.
Um, Roger, is this something that in addition to, you know, sort of being a presentation, you would approve or see approving as a handout?
Yes, conceptually. I would obviously have to review the actual slide and the corresponding handout, but conceptually, I would definitely uh envision approving that material.
So maybe.
I I I agree. The more ways we can break this down for the voters, the better. Uh, some people are, you know, words people, other people are visual people.
Right. Okay.
So is that something you want me to put together with my quote-unquote oral presentation to try to get to you guys? Or Tom, did you want to do that?
I can work with whoever was to, you know, if anybody wants to help or put something together, I'd be more than happy to work with them.
Maybe the two of you could just get together, even if it's a conversation. And um, or or Diane, you could put a draft together and Tom can look at it and see if it flows for him as well.
And one thing, Catherine, if I may, um the members, the select board is not uh wedded to the assignment I made in three articles. If you amongst yourselves would prefer a different uh, you know, assignment of who is taking the motion and any presentation uh on which of those, you know, whatever of those three articles, you are free to do so. I will entertain a motion from any members of the select board on on those three articles.
Well, I personally am happy with mine. It's a pretty simple one. I I don't always get the simple ones, so. But yeah, we can, we can um, we can play that out as as uh Roger has played it at the, sort of do a dry run at the warrant hearing and I guess if something doesn't work or we're uncomfortable or we don't, we wish to change it around, we have an opportunity on Tuesday to to do that at our meeting. So, does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, and I'll, I will, we, both Tom and I have the, well, I have the list of the members of the, I call it a committee, it's kind of a ragtag group that um, in a way, I shouldn't say it, it's a hardworking group of of organizers of the committee. I will send out an email requesting that we have all of the final, we'll be able to make all the final decisions on a a meeting on Friday so that we can present it to the in sort of final form uh to the pres, to the uh select board on on Tuesday. And then also to the public. No, I'm sorry. I'm not sorry. I don't, I I'm, that is, that was a poor choice of words. It's only ragtag, it's not ragtag, it's diverse. It's like, who might have some information on how to do that? Let's bring them together with these other people that might have some other information. And maybe together as a group, we'll all come up with all the information and it'll be cohesive. That's, that's my definition of ragtag. These are all very skilled, high, hardworking people who, you know, have a bit of, or have taken on something that maybe they've not, never done before, but are are researching it. So I apologize for my use of ragtag. Yeah. It's not ragtag, not in that sense, not in the derogatory sense at all. Okay. Anything else on on town meeting? And um, we'll of course have this on the agenda for next week as well. If not, we have our, you know, other matters as may could been reasonably anticipated. I have none. Um, just to update the board on meeting dates. Um, this slide actually shows the twenty-second, which is today, so we're obviously having this meeting. So our next scheduled, well, it doesn't, um, it does not have the fact that neck, our next actual scheduled meeting is Monday, the twenty-eighth as the warrant hearing. Uh, we will have to post that as a select board meeting. So we're meeting on the twenty-eighth. And then we have a regular meeting on the twenty-ninth, which will, as I said earlier, um, we hope to um, have the information that we need to deliberate and vote to appoint a TA as well as, you know, whatever ATM issues. And there are a few other things that um that will be on that agenda. Um, and then our, well, I shouldn't say our, then then we have uh town meeting on the first, we, the select board will have a short meeting before town meeting in case there are some last minute logistics that we have to address. Time to be determined. I think we usually do it at noon for a one o'clock meeting, town meeting. Um, and then from my point of view, anyway, the final, the the next meeting, um, there's one meeting after town meeting, which is April fifth. Um, that's the last meeting before the election. So those are the meetings every week as, or a couple of times a week as they play out. Does anyone have anything? Any other meetings they want to have? Maybe not? Okay.
No, nope.
Okay, all right. Um, thanks, you, thank you. I think perhaps we're ready to take Diane's motion to adjourn.
Yes, um, I make a motion to adjourn our meeting at eight forty-three PM.
Second.
Okay, we'll um vote on the motion to adjourn, Gary.
Yes.
Diane?
No. Uh, yes, sorry, what happened?
Uh, we'd outvote you because I'd say yes and it would be two to one in favor of adjourning.
We'll go, we'll go three, 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 zero.
Okay, so we have a unanimous approval to adjourn um at eight forty-two or eight forty-three. Um, and thank you very much. We had a lot of to do uh at this meeting and as usual, we we get through it all, so. This is um, it's a great, it's a great board. I've been, I've been, enjoyed it. Um, and we will be together again on Monday evening, seven o'clock.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys very much. We'll see you soon.